I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I'd like to welcome everyone here to the September meeting of the Rondacoye Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get underway, if anyone is here in relation to the matter relating to 2841 Culver Road, the appeal from the Fire Marshal's interpretation, my understanding is that that is going to be postponed and will not be heard tonight. So if you were here in relation to that, I wanted to let you know that now before you sat through everything and then found that out later. Before we get underway, there's some other matters that I am required to go over with you. First, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a common orderly fashion through that exit and then use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are being recorded by our Secretary, Michelle, for the purposes of a record and minutes, not as a verbatim transcript. When you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time so that she's clear who is speaking and gets that accurate in the minutes. And also, please speak clearly into the microphone. We will follow the items as they appear on the agenda in that order. There are extra copies of the agenda at the table next to the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify himself or herself, state their address, raise their right hands, be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of their case, the members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions, engage in any discussion that seems appropriate, and then we will open the case to public input once all that has been completed. There are three categories of public input. First, we'll ask for those who wish to speak in support of the application. When everyone who's spoken in support is concluded, then we'll ask for those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And following that, we will then ask for those who wish to speak to the application but aren't sure if they're for it, opposed to it, or just want to talk about it. Once all that public input has been completed, then the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to respond to anything that was raised during the public input. After that has been completed, then the public hearing will conclude and we'll continue on to the next case. After we've heard all of the cases, we will then take a recess. Following our recess, we will come back and take up the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda and for whom the applicant or their representative remains present. So if the first case applicant is not present, but the second case applicant is present, we would start with the second case. We'll then go through all the cases of the applicants who are present and then go back to the top and take up those cases in the order that they appear on the agenda for those who have left. No further input is allowed during the deliberation part of the meeting after our break, but you're welcome to stay and listen if you choose to do so. If you wish to leave but are curious as to what the decision was, you can either find out by watching us on TV or calling the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m., and they'll be glad to tell you what we decided with respect to each of the cases. Having concluded that, we will take up the cases on our agenda, and Michelle will call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1409-1. Upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, acting as agent for Morgan Depot Plaza LLC for area variances, to subdivide an existing 14.9 acre parcel into six separate parcels with cross-access agreements with less than required setback requirements and exceeding maximum allowable lot coverages on premises 999 East Drew Road, the Depot Plaza, in an manufacturing district.
Good evening. Mike Montalto with Costage Engineering, offices at 217 Lake Avenue.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening. We're here this evening on behalf of Morgan Holt LLC, or Morgan Depot LLC, one of their many different LLCs, requesting area variances associated with an administrative resubdivision of the Depot Plaza. We were here in, I believe, 2012, started the whole process with the redevelopment of the Depot Plaza. Tops, the Kmart was redeveloped into Tops. The fuel station, we came back, obtained area variances associated with development of an out parcel for Sonic. Subsequent to all that, from a owner financing standpoint, they've seeked to subdivide the parcel. No, this is, for lack of a better term, what we're calling paper variances. There's no physical change in the site whatsoever from what, you know, you've all seen in the preceding months and even, you know, if you were to walk out there today. As a result of this, there's no physical change to anything that's occurring in the plaza. However, we've drawn lot lines to allow each one of the entities and lease parcels to be able to secure financing independent of each other so that one parcel is not burdening another from a financial standpoint, from their lease agreements. Associated with that, we've got, and one of these days I'm going to invest in a laser pointer, there's six lots being created. One is the overall plaza lot, which controls all the accesses. One of the things you may note from your, from the administrative subdivision plan is the main plaza is the only one that has any road frontage. So these other lots really are being only done from a finance standpoint. They have no access to Ridge Road from a break-in access standpoint. It's just, you know, the creation of what's basically a lease parcel or a finance parcel associated with them. We've got a number of variances. I can walk you through them. They are spelled out in the, in the application. We're creating, as I said, we're creating the one main lot for the overall plaza. Houses the Kmart building, or what was the Kmart building, and the main plaza area. The only area variance associated was number A, or letter A, the side setback because it shares a common wall with the Tops building. So we're asking for a zero lot line variance there. Lot number two is what we call the Tops main building, and the lot line there pretty much follows the building exterior for that building. So that one has setbacks associated with front, rear, you know, side, every side plus lot coverage because the lot is only defined as the building. Lot three, which is the fuel canopy area, has a rear lot line setback that we're asking for. It's also interesting to note, they all comply with an area, from an area standpoint. It's only impervious surface area and side and rear setbacks due to the way the lot lines were configured. Lot four is just impervious surface area. That's where the bank is. Oops, that's not where the bank is. That's where the Sonic is. We did have two area variances that were part of the Sonic application. The front setbacks for the canopies, those are still applicable. That isn't affected by the resubdivision of land. Lot five is...
That's the bank.
The existing bank, bank property. That one is area variance as well as a rear setback because the bank is built. Now, I'll get to it in a second as well. One of the things we did in terms of how we selected the lot lines is we left all the main drive aisles under common ownership. So the lot lines were picked as being edges of parking areas, parking fields and all the rest of it. That's how those lot lines were established, and that's how it defined what the area setbacks, what the setback requirements were. And then lot six is the Monroe Muffler Building, where we're looking for a side setback and again, an impervious surface area. When you look at the overall plaza, you know, it's still, which is the intent, you know, is it still under manufacturing? And I believe, you know, there's been some discussions that some of that may ultimately be fine-tuned from the zoning district standpoint, but with the current zoning we have today, the administrative subdivision, which has been already processed through town staff and is in the process of being filed with the county clerk's office, creates the area variances that we're requesting. And again, it's no physical change whatsoever. So when you go through the burden of proof standards and the discussions of, you know, will granting any of this have adverse effect on community and all the rest of it, there's virtually no change. It's a paper of, you know, area variances. There's no physical condition being changed or created that requires the area variances today. It's a self-brought-on, you know, from the one burden of proof standard. It is self-created in that, you know, to meet the changing obligations under financing for construction projects, you know, they want individual parcels so that whatever happens on Tops doesn't affect Sonic's ability to, you know, pay their...
It's created by the banks, not the applicant.
Yes, right. Okay. So at this point, I guess I'd like to conclude my formal presentation and turn it over for...
Just a question on, and I know I read it in here, but it, the easements for all the ins and outs, and obviously because you've got lots that are in the middle that, you know, for...
There's a reciprocal access easement plus the deed for the property before it was, before any of this started conveyed access rights to anybody who was a tenant within the plaza. So that was in place before we even started the whole redevelopment portion of things. And that was reviewed when we were doing site plan approval as well. But there is a reciprocal access easement. We had, we went as far under the Tops redevelopment to obtain cross-access easements with Home Depot as well and that configuration of that driveway, so.
Well, it's all part of the deed.
It's, yeah, it's all part of the land ownership title. Yep.
I just have a question. Am I quite clear? Do these individual businesses own that land that they sit on, or is it, how does that work?
Morgan Holt owns the property. Or not Holt, Morgan Depot owns the property. In the future, if one, you know, if they were to decide that, you know, if Sonic or somebody were to decide they wanted to purchase that from them, they could, but that's not the, that's not the intent. It's all under common ownership, but it's allow, it's to allow the tenants to have their financing independent of that. You know, right now, the way it sits, in order for Sonic to complete their financing, you know, want to go from the construction loan to an actual mortgage on the facility once it's built, if you search the property, Tops has, you know, a decent amount of money borrowed and invested in their building. So by creating the separate lots, it allows Tops to do what they do financially without encumbering any of the liabilities associated with Sonic's doing financially and all the rest of it. So, you know, in the, in the past, we used to do these as lease parcels. This is becoming quite common in the commercial development world to create these administrative subdivisions that...
The financing is more for the availability for the buildings?
Yes. Yeah. That, you know, that, it doesn't change what Morgan, you know, it doesn't change what the landowner is able to do, but what's happening is, is these people are saying, look, in order for us to sign leases and provide the commitments, and everybody wants a signed lease now before they'll move forward with it. You know, before the buildings went up on spec, it didn't matter. The guy owned the plaza. You know, now it's, they need a signed agreement before they'll turn around and start doing anything. And we go through a fair amount of work now, putting together these exhibits of what the parcel would be and only what the parking field is because that's all, whether it's M&amp;T, Canadago National, Lyons, whoever the guy's financing, they only want to tie financing associated to that part that's being, you know, that's under their control. So that's what, that's what drives or is driving this process.
Is there opportunity here for additional tenants in, in the overall building?
Well, there is, there's still additional space, but there's not, you know, I think Morgan, you know, Morgan Depot Plaza has looked at it and said, the only areas that they currently would see broken out, you know, in addition to what they already have in terms of signed leases being Tops and Sonic, is the bank and the Monroe Muffler. Then everything else would still be common ownership. The Tops is only broken out just due to the sheer size of the tenant and the dollar investment they made in that part of the building.
What about the, the rest of the old building that is not all rented out yet?
Right, but there wouldn't be any subdivision of land. Those are, those are leasehold agreements. Somebody pays a certain amount of square footage for an improvement within the, you know, they don't get a portion of that building or whatever. Tops specifically tore down that end of the building and built 80,000 square feet for themselves. That's, that's their, you know, although it's on Morgan's property, it's their building. The other part is Morgan's building, and he's leasing out, you know, flex space.
It could be foreseeable though, that if the old Kmart building was purchased by somebody large like Tops and wanted to reconfigure...
Yeah, Tops or if, you know, I mean, the, whether it's been Benderson, Core Development, Morgan Holt, you know, I mean, it's not uncommon for plazas to change. You know, we, we can't sit here and tell you that, you know, Angelo and Grosse and Morgan, you know, Depot Plaza will own it forever, you know, but their intent is, is they've made a significant investment in a continued ownership, you know.
No, but my question was, if that one building could be broken up, the original Kmart building could be broken in half and you come to us again at some point to say, hey, we need to split these two?
Not, I mean, it's with the current...
Possible, but...
It's possible, but the current amount of money that they've spent, I mean, they've gutted the entire Kmart and redone it. So somebody would have to come along with a pretty reasonable, you know, project to turn around to say, let's reconfigure that whole part. That was, you know, that was their investment in the plaza. What happened through Tops and all the rest of it allowed them to take that whole additional other square footage and completely alter it, change it, you know, and market it toward, you know, the hospital and all the rest of the folks, the people that they have had sign, you know, the leases. So it's not, can't say it would never happen, but it's not in the current business plan or model, you know, for that to happen.
Not that it would be bad. I'm not, I'm not acting like it would be something negative. Just a question.
Yeah, if some, if somebody came along and said, we wanted to take down another 40,000 and put one, you know, one particular thing up and they're, you know, I don't think anybody, you know, as long as it met, as long as it didn't impede upon the rest of the tenants and plaza use, you know, and work from a site planning standpoint, it could happen, yes.
When we go to make, each one of them has to be a separate motion, I, I would understand, right? Because you, they've written up on...
I was thinking of doing it as one.
Six different forms. I'm just curious whether we make a motion on every one of them to...
I think we can do it. I'll think about that, but I was thinking we would do it as one rather than six.
It'd be easy.
Yeah. I can't imagine us acting differently with respect to the different ones.
One over the other.
Yeah. So, but if, if that appeared to be the case, then we could break it out. Any further questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that and move on to our next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1409-2. Upon the matter of request by Robert D. Kramer for an area variance to install front yard fencing exceeding maximum allowable height, linear footage and type on premises 2924 Culver Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, I'm Bob D. Kramer. I live at 2924 Culver Road.
Mr. Kramer, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. Okay, I would just like a fence in between 2924 and 2910 Culver Road because of the unsightly cars that are parked there, which will be higher than the fence, which I want to do four feet instead of the 32 inch, and I want a, instead of a, I want a, oh, let's see here...
You want 40 feet instead of 32 feet?
And that is correct, yes, sir.
And the fence that you're proposing to install, would that be of the same type and color and finish as the fence that's already present on your property in the rear?
That is correct. A shadow box fence, they call it. And I'll stay three feet with, from the sidewalk as predicted. And I got all the information that you wanted, signed signatures and stuff, photos and...
On our, on our application, it's, it's a three and a half foot fence is allowed and a four foot fence is requested.
That's correct.
We have a variance of a foot and a half. It should just be a half a foot. Right?
I would think so, yeah.
Right, I want a four foot.
Yeah, four feet, not five. Right.
Well, if I can go five, I like five. The higher the better, to be honest with you. Because the cars are higher than the fence will be anyway, so there'll be no obstruction whatsoever, even with a six foot fence.
Well, if four feet doesn't cover the problem, why aren't you asking for a higher fence?
I didn't know I could, to be honest with you, right now. I thought four foot is all I could ask for. To be honest with you, I would have asked for more.
Actually, I wondered the same thing. I'm right here. Look, oh, I'm sorry. I wondered the same thing as I'm looking at these photographs, and I don't blame you for wanting to get that view out of sight.
Correct.
Which is unfortunate, but I thought, gee, six feet would do, would do the job much better, you know, and I, I thought maybe that's, that would be the way to go, but when I saw four foot, I wondered why.
But I thought I only can go four foot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting that now and I...
The fence that runs along your house on that side in the back, is that a six-foot fence?
Correct.
So that would be, you're talking about continuing the same size?
Yeah, it'd be the same thing. If he wanted to change that, I would support that. I really would, because I, I see what he's contending with here.
It would be great.
You'd like to change it to a six-foot request?
Could I do that? Yes.
Then you're taking six foot out into the front yard. You're talking about taking six feet out all the way to three feet from the curb?
Correct.
Well...
I wouldn't be in favor of that. Well, I, I think what we can do is we can, we can allow him to amend his request to be to six feet, and then we can decide if we don't want six feet going all the way. We can decide at what point he would have to go down to the four. Drop it down to four, yeah. Yeah. All right, so we'll, when we take it up, we'll take it up as a request for six feet, and one of the issues that we'll have is to determine how far out, if at all, we're going to allow you to go with a six-foot fence as opposed to a four-foot fence as opposed to a three and a half foot fence.
Okay, great.
Okay. Are you okay with that, if it starts out at six and then goes down to four in the front?
Sure. As much as I can get away with for the sight of all the cars and stuff, it'd be, the more the better.
And is this a fence that's already pre-made, or is this fence going to be made?
No, it's going to be made. Me and my brother are going to make it because you can't buy, well, if it's a six-foot fence, I can, it'll be pre-made. About a four fence, foot fence, you can't buy, so we're going to make it.
All right, that's...
So if I got a four foot, I can buy, or six foot, I can buy a six foot. And it will be installed in concrete and painted and the whole shebang.
Okay. All right.
The 40 feet in length that you're asking for, does that bring you right to the three foot setback?
Three foot from the sidewalk. And they say the sidewalks on my property, which, which I don't care, but I'll stay three foot back.
I looked, you know, when I was out at the property, and I'm not even sure that that extra eight feet will provide you much more as far as hiding those cars.
What do you mean, eight feet?
The eight-foot variance you're asking for.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to go all the way to three foot from the sidewalk.
I understand.
But I don't have much choice, do I, anything else? I mean, anything I can do to hide the cars, that's all I'm looking for.
I'm just wondering if 32 feet will, will do that for you?
Well, I want to go, well, hopefully I got the, the measurements correct. I want to go from the fence I have there already on the property line all the way three feet from the sidewalk. Unless we got the measurements wrong, but...
I think what he's saying is that 32 feet might be enough to provide what you're asking for without going the extra eight. That's the question that he was raising.
Uh, I don't know. Good question, I guess.
I'm just asking because you're, the variances you're asking for are so insubstantial that I wonder if you need them at all. You can go 32 feet long at three and a half feet high, and you don't need a variance.
Right, okay, correct. Well, I don't think the three and a half is going to be substantial, definitely, because then I'll just see everything. And not it's only the cars, but all the other debris as you can see in the photos. I tried it before with lots of pushes, high six-foot pushes, and it didn't work because they knocked them down and spoiled them, so. So I'm hoping with the fence, it'll give me a defense, pardon the thud, but...
Yet also, when I'm looking at the pictures, several of them are from above the six-foot fence. I could see, you know, so you...
Well, the more I got, the better I feel. But that would be great. The higher I go, I would be a lot happier with that.
I was just going to make a comment about the fact that your next-door people are tenants. They don't own the place.
Correct.
And that they really have caused you a lot of grief as far as making a mess out of the ground with oil and that type of thing.
Not, but these people are sort of bad, but the people before them were the worst. They killed my abrevities and everything with the oil. But it just continues on and on and on. And actually, the, the other day, the owner man came over and said, do whatever you want to do, if you're happy, I'm happy. That's his exact words, so if you want to contact him, so.
I think your pictures, your pictures tell a lot.
It does. If I could put up a brick wall, I would. But I don't want to get anybody in trouble. I just want a fence.
Okay. Was the landlord willing to take any of that debris and old fencing out when you talked to him?
I didn't discuss that with him, no. But he seems to be willing to do whatever has to be done, but he hasn't done anything. He seems to be willing.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who here who wishes to talk about this application? We'll close the hearing with respect to that case and move on to our next case.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Sir Chairman, just for the record, there was a letter of support from a few neighbors.
Oh, yes. Included with the, was that included with the packet?
Yeah.
Yes, it was, it was a letter signed by Dominic Trimaldi, 2935 Culver Road, Josh Menelus, 2902 Culver Road, and Carlos, not able to read that, 33 Russell Ave. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1409-3. Upon the matter of request by Katrina Schmidt for a special use permit to harbor three to four Huns with coop and run pursuant to section 235-70 of Town Code on premises 22 Redmond Road in an R2 residential district.
Hi, I'm Katrina Schmidt, resident 22 Redmond Road. And yeah, I want to see if I may have the ability to keep, I actually already have the chickens.
You could raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, I actually already have the chickens. They moved with me from my previous home, and I want to hopefully be able to keep them. and I want to hopefully be able to keep them. Included in the packet that I provided has all the information needed. I do have copies of letters from my neighbors stating that they are in favor of this. I didn't have time to get them to you at the time the packet was presented, but I do have copies for everybody if you're interested.
Okay, if you could hand that to Mr. Vanette and we'll pass that down. In your letter that you wrote, talking about the neighbors, you mentioned many of them were not opposed. Does that suggest that were some that were opposed?
Um, I'm not sure how, because I know that the town came to my house in regards to the fence that I was putting up, which was permitted to have. At point, when I cleaned the chicken coop, I let the chickens out of the cage. I don't know, just they just walk around the yard. It's fenced. I don't know if someone saw them or something and complained, but for some reason, the individual who's there in regards to the fence made mention of the chickens. I don't know that anyone complained. I'm not sure. So that's why, but the neighbors that I spoke to were in favor. And I'm not sure I have much else to present. I have everything included in the packet.
How long have you had the chickens there at this house?
Since I moved in. I moved in late November.
So it's almost coming up in a year.
Yes, sir.
Have they ever gotten out of the backyard?
No, sir.
Is there any, is this one letter, 30 Redmond, is that the people right next door?
Um, I honestly don't know the addresses. The Acosta's are on one side and the Spinella's are on the other side.
And then Mr. Hamilton's across the street?
Directly across the street, yes. He's actually the previous owner of the home.
Your home?
Yes.
You currently have three?
I currently have two.
Two, all right.
Correct.
If we were to give you two versus three versus four, I mean, why do you want four?
Because I originally had four. A friend of mine was looking to have more, so I gave him two of mine, but it's not working out, so he's looking to give them back to me. But I, he's holding on to them until we know what's going on.
You had any trouble with rodents?
No.
Foxes?
No. I have a dog, so she keeps other things away.
Keeps the other things away?
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Joanne Leo. I live at 31 Redmond Road. I am definitely against her having chickens, mainly because my next-door neighbor wanted chickens several years ago, and we talked him into understanding that this was residential property. It's all residential. There's nothing there as far as commercial. There's nothing there that says farmland. We don't need chickens. They're bringing back the red fox. I've seen it walking down our street. We don't need it. We have had coyotes over there in the last year, mostly since she got her chickens. I really would respectfully decline her application for chickens. There are old dogs, there are young dogs, there are big dogs, there are little dogs, there are sick dogs, there are well dogs. If they can't get to her chickens, they will get to our pets. There are cats outside all the time. They'll begin to disappear. There are little children who, if the red fox comes up, it's not going to know any difference between a small child and a chicken. They all run, they all make noise. I would prefer that we did not have chickens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone that would like to talk about it? Would you like to address anything further?
Um, in regards to what was presented there, a couple different points. One, I'm an avid huntress. I know the mindset of fox and coyote very well. I'm an avid predator hunter. I know what they're coming after. And if anything, the abundance of outdoor cats in the neighborhood will bring around any predators just as much. The dogs that bark in the neighborhood, not of which is mine, my dog doesn't bark, honestly, unless there's a threat to my household, but otherwise, there's, they're just as, those items or those things that she presented are just as much of a threat to bringing in predators to the neighborhood as chickens. Other thing is, my chickens are quiet. They don't make noise. I don't have a rooster. It's not like they're cockadoodledoodling and calling in these predatory animals. I see deer and everything as well. We are in an area that does have a lot of greenery and trees and areas that those type of animals want to be anyways. I myself have a cat that is an indoor-outdoor cat, so if by having the chickens, I'm threatening my own cat, then, you know, I'm putting my own animal at risk by having the chickens at my house, too. So I have something to lose as well. And I don't believe, and I know fox for sure are not going to approach a small child unless they have a disease. They're not going to attack a small child. They're just not. Coyotes are not pack animals. They're smaller than my dog, actually, typically. And they're not, they're not predatory animals to things like people. They're predatory animals to things like mice and cats and small things. They're not going to harm children if they are in the area, which I'm 100% positive that those animals were already in the area prior to my residence.
You would agree, though, that fox and coyotes are attracted to chickens as well?
I would say yes, but just as much as the cats and other animals that are, you know, around the neighborhood that aren't mine.
Mr. Hammond, you had some information on chicken slash disease.
Yeah.
What was the name of that disease and how does it work?
Yeah, we should mention that salmonella is prevalent in chickens.
Correct.
Baby chickens particularly tend to get shipped all over the country.
Correct.
Most normally, when people have small children, and they start out as maybe pets, and then they grow into large chickens, if you will. I used to raise chickens, so I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. The problem with small kids and baby chicks is, if anybody's had small children, they tend to touch the chickens and then go to their mouth, and salmonella germs get passed on. Now, recently, the Center for Disease Control has reported that they're chasing around the country a couple of strains of salmonella. Traced it back to chicken farms, I guess, for lack of a better term. They determined that 300 people got sick from salmonella, 31% of which went to the hospital. Fortunately, no one died. And it ranges in age, the illness from four years old to 95 years old. So again, it's the very young, the old, like me. And to me, it's unacceptable to have chickens in a township, if you will. Personally, as I say, I used to have chickens out in the country where I had no neighbors and we had no small children to worry about. And I think it's a reasonable concern that salmonella exists. I don't know that we want to encourage it. Rodents, again, from my own experience, we used to have trouble with rodents coming into our chicken coops. And in fact, for fun, I used to go down and shoot them, if you will. And then the question, and one of the last speaker brought it up, is this is a town. Do we really want to raise farm animals within our town? And I think that's something to take into consideration. The neighbor doesn't want it. We've always said we should listen to what the neighbors have to say. It's not the final decision, but it is one more piece of the puzzle here. This is one that personally I can't support. I just think it's wrong to have chickens, particularly given the salmonella, the effect with small children and older people, the fact that it does bring in rodents, and that we're a township. Now, in this particular case, the location's a little bit off the beaten path. So, you know, it would be a little nicer down there than, say, in the middle of the town square. But it is still the fact that we are the town we're on to quite, and I just don't think that's the thing that we want to have in within our town, is have farm animals. I mean, what's next? That's my opinion. Thank you for asking, Mr. Thomas. Any other comments from the board?
We heard any other reports from the other ones that we've done of any problems at all?
Well, it's interesting you should bring that up. I understand that that's going to be a topic at our October meeting. We are going to have re-applications from those people that we've allowed to have in the past, and we're going to have a report. So October is going to be, at least in part, Chicken Month at the Zoning Board of Appeals.
That's correct. That's correct, Chairman.
So we will have, we're going to have a lot of information on what has, next month, on what has taken place with those people who have been allowed to have chickens for a short period of time.
I can't say generally the only complaint we have had was noise-related. But other than that, we'll go through them case by case at the next meeting. Would it be best for this to be tabled till after that meeting? To see what the overall success rate of the ones that are out there now that we've granted, as opposed to taking a chance of not getting it approved versus getting it approved?
Well, I was having that same thought myself, that we could consolidate chickens in October. And would you object to having this adjourned? There's two ways that can happen. You can agree, and we'll adjourn it. Or you can say no, and if we decide to adjourn it, we can adjourn it. Under the, if you consent, the time period that we're allowed for making a decision doesn't come into play. If you don't consent, then the time play, time consideration comes into play, and we have to make a decision within 60 days of, I'm not sure what date. But that, we could make a decision in October after we've heard some... I mean, one of the things that we've done in the past is we've allowed some people to have them. There have been different designs of coops, different situations, different circumstances. And what we've done in each case is ask to have a follow-up report presented, information presented to us after they've actually been in place. Because we don't, aside from Mr. Hammond, we don't have much experience with chickens. The only experience I have with chickens is on the grill, so, you know. If you don't object to that, we can do that. Or if you would prefer to have us go ahead tonight, we may do it anyway. But I'd give you the chance to have that input.
It's kind of hard for me to make that decision, because it's not that I'm opposed to doing that, but the problem is, if I need to find a new home for the chickens, they should be reestablished. I want them to have a chance to reestablish to their home before the winter comes and have the new owner be able to establish the chickens appropriately. By waiting until late October, we're starting to get into late fall, and they're not going to be established in the new home if I do have to...
Our next meeting is the first Monday in October.
Okay.
So that would be October the 5th, 6th?
6th.
It's three weeks from tonight.
Before you answer, she could actually, she has chickens at her house now, right?
She does.
Correct.
If she was to postpone this, we just postponed, they could stay there, couldn't they, until we make a decision?
It would be pending in front of us, so yes.
That helps.
It helps and it doesn't, I guess, it's still... Can I actually address one thing that he, Mr. Hammond had mentioned, too?
Sure.
As far as like disease and things like that, I do work for a vet's office part-time, and they are seen regularly by a veterinarian.
That certainly helps.
Yes.
And are they checked for salmonella when they're seen?
Yes. Well, they're checked, they're checked initially, and then if there's a concern where they're exhibiting symptoms, they would be again, but they've been checked for psittacosis and salmonella.
So there's symptoms that they exhibit if they...
They can, yes. I do monitor stool. It's kind of gross, but I work at a vet's office, so it doesn't bother me, but by checking their stool and seeing if there's any concerns, breathing, physical appearance, things like that.
Okay, all right. Well, that takes us back to the question. You can think about it and let us know up until the deliberation time.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, so we'll close the hearing with respect to that case and move on to our next case.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB-1409-4. Upon the matter of request by John Slavato for an area variance to construct a new single-family dwelling with less than required building size and exceeding maximum allowable lot coverage on premises 29 Madison Terrace in an R2 residential district.
Good evening. I'm Tom Zimmerman. I reside at 9 Harrison Terrace. I'm here representing John Slavato.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We're here asking for a variance, I guess, a new variance. Last November, we were here and approved for a 24 by 40 two-story house. After serious consideration of hearing the neighbors unhappy about that over the winter, we came back to the town and said we should put a ranch in to match the neighborhood. So the variance we're asking for now is actually one foot narrower than it was previous, but 10 feet longer. The only caveat to that is when we were here last fall in November, you actually approved a 24 by 60 house because it had a 20-foot deck. We're not asking for a deck. So actually, we're 10 feet less. But by the structure, we're 10 feet more. Hopefully, I explained that correctly.
What you'd like to do is build a new place on the lot?
Yeah.
And this application that's front of us now has been modified from the original to try and accommodate concerns that were raised by the neighbors.
Absolutely. It's the only reason.
Kind of thing that we like.
Yep. Just trying to be good neighbor. We live there.
Understood. Now, you're not the owner of the property, correct?
Correct.
And who's going to live in the property? You or the owner?
Neither.
Neither?
Yep.
It's going to be for sale after it's done?
Correct.
And do we have approval for the applicant to speak for the owner?
Yes. Well, yes, it was signed on the, on the application.
The owner signed the application indicating that he's the agent. Yep, I see.
And I was here representing John last fall as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We work together.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or concerns? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who would like to come up and talk to us about this application? Come right on up. You have to come up, ma'am, you have to come up to the podium and so we can hear you. Speak into the microphone. Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Bonnie Brady. I'm at 37 Madison Terrace. I live next door to the lot that Tom's going to build on, and I have a question for Tom. Are you applying for any variance on the north side near my property to build closer than five feet to the property lot line?
No.
No? Okay, I have no objection.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then. We'll close the case.
Thanks.
With respect to that, thank you, sir. Move on to the next matter.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB-1409-5. Upon the matter of request by John and Rebecca Lambrix for an area variance to construct a covered front porch with less than required front setback on premises 17 North Terrace in an R2 residential district.
Hello.
Good evening.
Oh, 17 North Terrace.
I'm Rebecca Lambrix. I also live at 17 North Terrace.
Could both raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I dare.
Okay. Before you get underway, I have been asked to... Okay. Before you get underway, I have been asked to direct everyone's attention to the letter that's attached to the applicant, application that has signatures from neighbors. One of the signatures at 26 North Terrace is from a Ken Fisher, who is a justice of the Supreme Court. And he's asked us to delete his name because he's learned since he signed that as a justice of the Supreme Court, since it doesn't directly affect his property, it was improvident of him to express any view. So he's asked to have his name deleted from that. So if you would just take his name off and consider him as not rendering any opinion one way or the other.
But I would like to point out, he does have a front porch.
I noticed that, I did notice that it was his house that had the front porch.
So we're back. We've redesigned the porch. We've made it a little less wide by a foot, and we've shortened it by a foot. And, you know, I-
And you're taking out the tree.
Tree, the tree is gone.
Tree is gone already?
And I'm in deep dew with my daughter especially, so, but-
No, we did take out the dogwood tree, so that's all cleared away. So it's pretty open.
So the, up from the house is going to be eight feet? It was 10 feet, right?
I think, I think it was nine, and we had it jogging around the tree. We're trying to save the tree, so it was like six and nine.
Yeah.
Now it's just eight across the front. It's an open porch with rails. I think actually, because we also in the process of digging out all the rhododendrons, which are about this high. I mean, I think the view actually is probably better. I mean, I'm not sure that, I really don't, there isn't much of a view, period. But any view you would have would, I think, would only be better. But, if you want to see, I don't know if people have seen the house. I do have pictures of our house.
If you can hand them to Mr. Vignette and pass them around.
Have you spoke at all with your next-door neighbor in reference to the change?
I sent them a letter asking them to respond to us, and they, and I think you should have a copy of that. They never responded to us.
So you don't know if she's happy about it or not still?
I would, if I was a betting person, I would bet 100% she's not.
But we, we also tried to speak with her, but she refused to speak with us. And so we were advised that maybe the next best thing would be the letter. And so that's what we did.
Yeah. I mean, we'd be glad to talk to them, but historically, it hasn't worked very well. We really have tried to bend over and try to make some concessions, but it just has not worked. I know she was upset and saying we cut her view up in the backyard. But we really tried. I mean, I spent a couple thousand dollars having plans redone, both for the addition to the house and the garage. And we couldn't reach any compromise on those. And that would have saved their view totally. It cost me a lot of money to put the garage where it was. And I showed up begging them to consider it. They just, they just wouldn't go for it. We were left really to do, that's the only place the garage could go. So anyways, we really have tried.
And going around the property, and with all the tall trees that you have in the backyard, it does cut off any view that she would have out of her backyard also.
Yes.
And again, maybe the house isn't necessarily the sole problem. It's the fact that she's locked in. But again, it's with trees, so there's nothing bad about that.
Well, and, but the same thing has happened to us by the neighbor, from the neighbors who are closer to the yacht club to the west. They planted arborvitae's, they planted a huge tree. It all cut off our view too.
Right, it's all blocked.
We have no view.
No, we don't have a view.
But we speak to them. We understand it's their right. It's their property. We're not, we're on friendly terms. And, and actually, the family that's concerned about what we're doing, their yard is totally planted, and their neighbors, there's no way they could see past.
The neighbors on the other side of them are, their view would be cut off by us.
I did stop by the other day and knocked at your door, knocked at their door. Nobody answered either place. And I stood in the driveway, in your driveway, over by her windows and tried to see the view, or the lack thereof.
Yeah.
From my eye level at 5'6", there's not a lot of view.
No. And I'd like to say, the Scots are not bad people. They really aren't. I understand that they're pretty upset with us, but they're not bad people. I do think they're a little unrealistic with their expectations. But basically, they're nice people. I think everybody on the street would say they're nice people. And the people that signed off saying they didn't care if we had a, had a porch, and matter of fact, most people I think liked it, I would not say that's a statement against the Scots at all. I just think that's a statement that they think it's not a bad idea.
I'm sympathetic to her idea about a view.
Yes.
It's something that I enjoy out my windows.
Yep.
However, in looking around, there's not much, I mean, you could, there's actually a warehouse or something, boathouse.
Scott Club has a, has a building down.
Kind of directly blocking the river from the angle that I stood at.
So I don't want to villainize anybody here, because I don't think anybody's a villainous in this.
You had, did you hand those pictures to Mr. Vignette?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Okay.
There's, take the-
There's another house in here, White House, which kind of has like-
A similar porch idea.
And Fisher's porch is in there. I think there's notes on most of the back, so. I had other pictures, but I couldn't figure out how to get them off my phone.
Any other questions from the board?
John, I just need a little clarification on how you modify this from the last time?
The last time, we were trying to save the dogwood tree. And so we only came out six feet, and I think over like nine. Then we came out nine feet, so it was kind of-
Can I explain that?
Yeah.
The dogwood was on the left side of the yard. So we were coming out with the porch just to the dogwood. That was only six feet out. So then we were jogging over and trying to come out for the rest of the way for nine feet. So it would have been a, two different, there would have been two different depths to-
Mainly because of the tree, right?
Because of the tree. We were trying to save the tree. But then-
The tree, the tree's gone.
The tree kind of blocked, you know, whatever, that was kind of blocking some of the-
So does that take away the necessary, the need for the nine foot? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, well, we just modified it to eight feet.
Oh, so, okay. So there's somewhere in the middle there.
Yeah, yeah.
But all the way across. We just decided we didn't need nine feet. Eight feet's enough to sit and-
But now at least it's straight across.
Right, just all, all eight feet across.
And then across, it's a little bit narrower too. It's a foot less on the side.
In addition to the numbers, the application, this application has additional information to support the justification for the request itself.
What we're doing is, for those who are wondering, as the pictures circulate, in case the pictures raise any questions, that's why we're paused. But I think what I'll do so that we can move things along is, if there are any questions that are raised by the pictures, we'll certainly have an opportunity to ask them. But let me inquire, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Again, I don't see any. So we'll continue to look at the pictures for a minute.
While we're waiting, Dee, did you have, in your attempts to talk to the neighbor next door, did you have any expectations about an outcome of conversation that may have alleviated animosity or anything like that? Was there?
We tried actually on the way out of the meeting last time, and she's just-
Well, what was, what was your, what was your position as far as if she objected again? Were you saying, well, this, we moved the tree, hopefully that'll help? Or, I mean, was there any plan on your side to?
I don't know what to do. I feel very badly about it. I mean, I was a little caught off guard. I mean, I'm not sure this is really the place to air this, but she brought it up, so I felt like I had to address it from our end. I, I don't know how to solve it.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would go to mediate. I mean, I would be glad to try to solve it, but I don't think there's a way to do it, unfortunately.
And it seems evident that she doesn't have a suggestion for you either.
No.
Or does not do it.
Right.
Okay.
Right. That's been kind of the suggestion every time we've wanted to improve our home, is they just didn't want us to do anything. No.
It's hard, because, you know, they're on the other side, and it's hard for us because we don't have any control of people on the other side of us either. But-
All right.
But it doesn't feel good to have people not like you either.
Did anyone have any questions after looking at the photographs? Okay, then we'll close the hearing with respect to that case. Thank you, sir. And move on to our next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number CB 1409-6. Upon the matter of request by Gretchen Reberg for a use variance to permit a two-family dwelling in an R1 single-family residential district on premises 1873 Portland Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Good evening. My name's Bill LaForte. I'm an attorney with the Trivet-Cristo office, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Gretchen Reberg, who is sitting here with me tonight in her application for a variance to have this home as a two-family residence.
If both of you could raise your right hands before you go further.
Certainly.
Do you swear or affirm that anything you say tonight, and everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
There are pictures of the home that Ms. Reberg has brought, in case any of the board would like to visit them. This home is located at 1873 Portland Avenue. I hope that you've all had a chance to see it. It's a beautiful home. In fact, from looking at the home from the street, you'd never know that it was a two-family. This home, we know, has existed as a two-family for at least 70 years, and perhaps even longer. I do want to refer to my letter of August 6th to the board, which I assume that you all have. It's interesting, because we have tried to research this as best we can to try to find if, in fact, this home might qualify as a pre-existing non-conforming use, because it has been used as a two-family, as I said, for at least 70 years, and it may even predate the Arundicoid zoning ordinance, which is 1929, and Donna Martello and I have talked about that. So it's an interesting question as to whether it might even qualify as a pre-existing non-conforming use. Be that as it may, we are here to ask for a use variance to qualify it as a two-family home. Obviously, for a use variance, there's the four-part test, as I've outlined in my letter. The first, of course, is obtaining a reasonable return. We've submitted information with regard to Ms. Reberg's attempt to sell the home. It has been listed with Knothnagle for many, many months now. There have been many open houses. There have been visitors to the home, prospective buyers who have come in. And quite frankly, once they see the home, they see it set up beautifully as a two-family, but they see that it's zoned R1, they immediately have walked away. There has been not one offer with regard to the house. It has definitely had a deterrent to the ability to sell the house. Frankly, Ms. Reberg is kind of perplexed, because she can't sell it as a two, because it's listed as a one. And anybody who wants to buy it and use it as a single-family is going to have to spend probably between $25,000 and $50,000 to refurbish the house into a single-family home. And it's interesting, because the home is set up so that the second floor is exactly the same footprint as the first floor. Exactly the same. Kitchen layout, bedroom layout, dining room layout, it is exactly, exactly the same. But again, you would never really know that it's a two-family, looking at it from the street. One of the entrances is on the side, and it just looks like a very, very nice, attractive, single-family home.
With respect to the information in your letter about the reasonable rate of return?
Mm-hmm, yes.
The thing that I don't see in there is what the dollars and cents proof about what the reasonable return is that she's not able to make. I see that you say that two-family residents are selling at $15,000 to $20,000 higher. The fact that they're selling it something higher doesn't mean that a lower price is an unreasonable rate of return. We don't know what the rate of return is at the $15,000 to $20,000 lower price. We don't know what Ms. Reberg paid for it. We don't know, I mean, it's been listed for four months as of the time that the letter was written.
It's recent, yep.
I understand that that's an effort to market it, but certainly, I don't think four months in today's world shows that it can't be sold. It's been sold a number of times before as it exists. And I'm operating on the assumption that there's nothing that can be found so far that establishes it as a pre-existing non-conforming use, or you wouldn't be here.
Well, I know that Ms. Martello was going to look at her records to see if there was anything. I am not aware of anything further than what I already have learned. There's no proof to the contrary either, Mr. Hindman, so-
Right.
It is, it's, it's an open question.
Right. But I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, our attorney will, but I believe that a pre-existing non-conforming use, the burden is on the applicant to establish that it meets that criteria, right?
Correct.
So in the absence of something establishing it, then it's deemed not to be. At least for argument's purposes.
For argument's purposes, yes.
Okay. And, and the other, the other thing is, there was an, I'm trying to recall when it was that Ms. Reberg was here previously.
It was 2013, early.
Right. And very shortly after that, there was an article in the AARP, I think it's the bulletin, the newsletter that comes out once a month.
I get it too.
I joined under my wife, so. She gets it, not me. In any event, there was a very interesting article about multi-generational families-
Right.
-living in a house together. And my thought was that, it came a month, I think, after, the month after she was here. And my thought was that that would be a perfect opportunity for multi-generational-
Well, in fact, that's how this house has been used, when Ms. Reberg bought it in 1994.
Which I think is different from two-family. The concern that the neighbors were expressing-
They are two, but they're completely two separate living quarters.
I understand that. But the concern that was being expressed previously was two-family with a rental as opposed to a single-family, which I believe Ms. Reberg testified that she was using it that way with her mother. That she was on the upstairs floor, and her mother was on the downstairs floor when she bought it, and that the previous occupant prior to her, I think she's indicated, had used it in a similar way. And that the people who lived there the longest, the Wests, I think it was, had used it that way for the time, most of the 70 years that you're referring to. So I don't know what, your letter doesn't indicate what has been done in terms of trying to attract multi-generational families to, to the property to use it as it has been used for most of the, at least most of the last 70 years.
Certainly, it has been used over the past 70 years for-
Is what?
It's somebody's cell phone that's near a microphone. I think it was me. Sorry.
Certainly, it has been used for multi-generational families, but that doesn't take away from the fact that it is built- the fact that it is built as a two-family house. I mean, it is a two-family house. It is set up exactly like a two-family house. Yes, we would love to have a multi-generational family come in and purchase it. That would be wonderful, but again, it's still a two-family.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to recall from the last time we were here that whatever it was done to make it a two-family house was not done with any permits, any town approval, any town sanction, and that's part of the reason why it's, we're having a hard time figuring out when it was done.
Well, it's been a two-family for 60, 70 years, so I don't know how far back the permits go. There hasn't been any changes to it.
No, I know there's been no changes, but isn't that part of the problem that we've had previously, was that there were no records of when it was made into a two-family?
When we have these kind of old...it's pretty obvious it was a double, and we went back in our records, but because we never had it listed as a double, we send it to our attorney usually with affidavits and the records we do have, because the records, and I'll pass them out, I think it's been given out before, it says back in 1931 it was built, and then another record says 1910, same assessor's office. Usually, that predates things.
So sometime in the 21 years is when it was built, either 1910 or 1931?
But they never said it was a double, but maybe back then they didn't say it's a double, just the way they...
But do we know when it was built?
Well, like I said, we have a record from the assessor's, 1931, and then the same thing in our assessor's records, it says 1910.
1910.
But I think 1931's the more, because that's where it shows where, you know, they explain the size of the building and everything. So with that, we did send it to Mr. Orelli with the affidavit showing that it has been used for 70 years, and he felt, send it to the board. Another attorney might have felt differently. It's just, until we sent it to the board.
Are we allowed to ask what it was purchased for, what it's being tried to be sold for in reference to the rate of return?
Yeah.
I think more than being allowed to, I think we're required to.
I purchased a home for approximately $134,000 in 1994. My mother and I bought this house precisely because it was a double. So she would have her own house, and I would have my own house. We bought it because it was a double, and we had our own separate space, so she didn't have to come upstairs, and I didn't have to go downstairs, as did the previous owners.
Right. So, and you've been trying to sell it for how much?
Since March.
How much has been the asking price?
The asking price was initially $219. We reduced it to $2,000.
$2,000.
Thank you.
That I understood.
$211. And in reference to, am I trying to advertise it, or Nath Nagel is trying to advertise it as a multifamily dwelling? Yes. If you drove by my house, you would see on top of the for sale sign, it says in-law apartment.
But now it comes to question is, trying to get $211 versus what you paid for it at $134, I realize you want to make some money, I realize that you hope your property appreciates. Obviously, I read in paperwork somewhere that the tax assessment was $198,000. All right. But in the town, our values of our properties have gone up and gone down a little bit, but is going up $70,000 to $80,000 a reasonable rate of return? That's where us as board members have to look at. And based on wondering whether that's a reasonable rate of return, can it be relisted at $189 and you get more bites?
The problem with that is, it needs to, if it's going to be a single family, it is going to need to be converted to a single family, which means whoever purchases it is going to have to spend a considerable amount of money to retrofit it basically into a single family. They will have to rip out a kitchen, and they will have to basically do the whole thing all over.
Or if it was continued marketed as an in-law, like she has been marketing as an in-law, but just lower the price point.
But the problem is, it's built as a two-family.
Will you get more bites?
I mean, that's...
I'm sorry.
It is built as a two-family. There's two separate living quarters with two separate kitchens.
I understand, but, you know...
And I don't know how you would characterize it to permit an in-law situation as opposed to a two-family.
Well, I mean...
I don't know how you'd do that.
My question is, it goes back to the reasonable rate of return on the investment, and we talked about this the last time, is that there was no, there were no numbers, there was no math to show that you paid X and that you were going to get less than X back. I mean, from what you just said, you stand to have a 75% return on your investment, which is a pretty darn good return on your investment. I mean, no reasonable rate...
For how many years?
Not over 20 years.
Twenty years. Twenty years?
Twenty years.
So I don't know how the numbers work out, but it's, from what I just heard right now, it sounds like, I mean, if you could sell the house at $189, that would be reasonable. That would be a reasonable rate of return. You could sell it at $189, exactly how it is right now.
The problem with that is, we have gotten no offers for either a two-family or a single-family, and if someone is going to buy the home and use it as a single family, they're going to have to spend $25,000 to $50,000, most likely. So if you sell it for $189...
So you didn't get any, you haven't received any offers...
Zero.
No offers.
When it's listed at $211.
And no offers.
Or $219.
No offers either.
And we've encouraged anyone who's interested in the home to submit an offer, whatever price they want. Using your argument, even if she was able to get $189 or $180, whoever is going to purchase it is going to have to spend $25,000 to $50,000, and they're going to take that off.
Only if they want to convert it back to a single-family home.
I'm sorry?
But then why would they...
Only if they want to convert it back.
But they can't legally use it as a double.
You can legally use it if it's an in-law or relatives living in it. I mean, if my brother and I want to buy it, and he wants to live upstairs, I want to live downstairs, that would be the perfect house for that.
I don't understand how you would allow that to happen. It's listed as a two-family. I mean, excuse me, it's listed as a single family, and it's clearly a double. It's clearly two families.
Yeah, I would have to look more closely at that to see whether that indeed would be a legal use of the property. I'm not confident it would be. I don't want the board's decision...
But then you wouldn't even legally be...
I don't want the board's decision to be based on what you believe is a legal use of the property, because it's being used as two separate residences.
Has the...
That's all I'm saying, until I can confirm...
I mean, it's my understanding that it's not a legal use right now, but that's why we're here.
My question is this: Has the first floor or the second floor ever been rented out to someone who is not related to the owner?
The person that bought it before the parents realized.
Who was that?
There was a young man that bought it in the late 70s, who only owned the house for eight, about approximately eight months, and he then sold it to my cousin and her sister. The reason he sold it is he, well, he had bought it because he thought he could rent it. And someone would complain, and I would believe, my guess is, I don't know who complained about that, is that it was the neighbor that was currently living next door.
All right. So I believe that it has been rented out in the past, yes.
So then, for perhaps eight months?
Well, there were obviously owners before that individual, and it was built as a double way back, way back when, so I'm sure it was rented out.
I mean, my recollection of the previous presentation was that the owner prior to the young man was the West family that lived there for, lack of a better term, forever, for the time we're talking about.
In the 1940 U.S. Census, for the property of, at 1873, it was listed as, I believe it was George West as the owner, and then Ward West is listed as a renter, including the amount he paid, which was at that point about $40 a month, Ward West and his wife.
And the West family was in the property until it was sold to that young man who owned it for about eight months, right?
Yes.
And then he sold it to your sister and...
My cousin.
And your cousin, and then they sold it to you and your mother.
Yes.
All right. So the only time it's been rented out to somebody who wasn't related to the owner would have been during that eight-month period.
However, it has always been viewed as two separate appointments. When my cousin and her sister lived there, they, my cousin had a picnic one day, and she showed my mother and myself only the half of the house that she owned, occupied, because her sister wasn't home. She didn't go in it because it was her sister's house.
I understand.
And I, whether it's rented and they collect rent for it, to me, doesn't make a distinction between the fact that it's a double, whether there's a cousin living there or a mother living there. I mean, to me, the distinction of whether they pay rent for it doesn't affect the legality of the use. It's a double.
My concern isn't the rent. My concern is the relation. It's being owned, owned and occupied by related people, as opposed to owned by one person and rented to an unrelated person.
I understand, but I still, I still don't follow your point about whether they're related or not.
Well, there's a huge difference in my opinion.
The fact that there's two separate units, whether there's somebody living in one of the units that's related to the other, I don't see the distinction when it comes to the legality of the use.
But you could, you could say that about any in-law apartment.
Right.
I mean, a lot of in-law apartments are separate apartments on the backside of a house or the side of a house. So you could say that about any in-law apartment, that they're doubles.
True, but I don't know that every in-law apartment has separate living quarters with separate kitchen facilities, separate entrance. I mean, they could...
The ones that do, you can say that about them.
I mean, yeah, I mean...
Doubles.
While my mother was alive, she paid me, and I paid the mortgage.
And there's separate utilities?
Separate utilities.
Everything is separate.
Separate front doors.
Again, whether it's a relation, to me, does not go to the legality of the use, and I would suggest that, you know, you consult your counsel on that, because I think that, while I see the point, again, I don't believe that it should affect the legality of the use.
If the town were to pass a provision allowing for multi-generational occupancy of a single property, that would affect the marketability of this property, correct?
If there's someone out there looking for...
Looking for that.
That type of situation, sure.
But I don't think there is. There wasn't ever anybody that came into it looking for that per se. There was one person that came in that wanted to buy it and pay cash for it at the time, and he wanted to put his mother downstairs and rent the upstairs, and as soon as my agent told him that it wasn't a legal double, they were out the door faster than it can be. The thing of it is, it's been seven months. I have had no offers...
Seven months? My understanding from the letter that was submitted was that it was listed in early April. The letter was dated August 6th, and now it's September 8th, so it would seem to me that that would be a period of five months.
At least five months.
Five months.
Probably a little bit longer than that, but that's roughly true, yes. It was after the winter season ended.
You know, I can't sell it. I want to sell it. I have another house I wish to buy, and by not having this zoning variation, the town is preventing me from realizing, whatever the phrase is that you use...
Reasonable rate of return.
Reasonable rate of return, or any rate of return, because I can't sell it.
And I'm not, I agree with Mr. Polino. I'm not convinced that, what is an unreasonable rate of return? And what reasonable rate of return are you being prevented from realizing by the existing zoning, which has not prevented the turnover of this property at least three times in the last 21 years, right? You've lived there 20, and he lived there eight months.
And my cousin and her sister...
Well, your cousin and her sister.
Oh, a number of years. A number of years.
So, I mean...
So almost 20 years.
I mean, I understand it's been listed four months, but that's, that's not unusual. I know someone whose house in errandicoid has been listed for eight months without any offers so far.
Well, if you do the math, if she bought it for $139 or whatever she bought it for in over a 20-year period, if she only got the $189, that would not be a reasonable rate of return over a 20-year period for a piece of real estate in Rochester, New York. I mean, we could go back and we could look at how real estate values have increased.
I mean, I'd be interested in seeing that.
I would be interested in seeing that also. I would be interested in seeing that also, because I don't, I don't know. I don't know that information, and you're asking us to just assume that, I mean, the way you write your letter is, she cannot receive $15,000 to $20,000 higher. In the absence of the requested variance, they're unable to obtain a reasonable return, but there's no, there's no evidence. That's what I need to see.
And it's not that she's allowed to get the maximum rate of return.
There's also a quote in there on the cost to refurbish...
$25,000.
As we have mentioned.
But I'm not, I'm not concerned about the cost to refurbish, because there's nothing in my mind so far that shows that it needs to be refurbished. You can spend $25,000, $30,000, or $50,000 renovating any house that you buy to change things and change features and add things, depending upon what you want to do. The question is, this house hasn't, that work hasn't been done in over 70 years, and I'm not convinced that that needs to be done in order for the house to be sold, at least not after it's only been marketed for five months, and I don't know, from what you've submitted, that she hasn't realized and isn't capable of realizing a reasonable, reasonable rate of return as it's currently zoned.
Okay. We can certainly disagree on that.
We will. Have you spent money remodeling bathrooms and kitchens, or is it pretty much how you've had it?
Well, you've spent money redecorating, but no, the bathrooms are the same. It's serviceable. I mean, they're attractive. I have pictures of them. They're usable.
Well, and again, that goes back to the reasonable rate of return. You invested $134,000, you haven't done any updating. Now, if someone were to look at the house at $211,000 and wanted to do some substantial updating, that you would have to spend that 20, like Mr. Hinman said, you'd have to spend that money to do the updating anyway. So is it the amount that you're asking for the property, or is it the actual, the way the property is laid out that is the deterrent? And what we're seeing is, it could be the amount of money. If someone were to have to remodel both of those and update them, both of those layouts, it would be a lot more than $25,000. So investing $200,000 and then putting another, you know, $25,000 or $50,000 into remodeling it, that may be why you're not getting any bites.
Well, again...
And I'm not a realtor, but just, you know, I think that should be looked at first.
This is a beautiful home that has been maintained impeccably.
I understand.
Exterior-wise, it is marvelous. There are many homes right nearby, right next door, that are multi-family. This does not affect, you know, the neighborhood at all, and I would submit that a beautiful home like this that would have basically almost no appreciation over 20 years, if she can only sell it for $150,000, $160,000, that does not get her a reasonable rate of return.
What is a reasonable rate of return?
On home values, I mean, well, I'm not a, I'm not a real estate broker, but I would certainly say, over a 20-year period, would have to go up at least 75%.
I hope my house does that.
Sometimes, real estate values have gone up 10, 10 to 15%.
75% a year?
No, 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 over the 20 years.
Has a realtor provided any comps?
Yes.
I mean, what are...
There's nothing exactly like my house.
Well, it may not be exactly like it, but you can get relatively close, so it gives you an idea of the value.
I'm trying to see if Ms. Mason had a statement in her...
All she tells us is that it can sell for $15,000 to $20,000 more if it's a two-family. I mean, that's usually the first thing a realtor does when they price your house, is to tell you what comparable homes have sold for.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I mean, I say that's usually the first thing a realtor will do, is look at comps to help set the price.
She did, multiple times, before I put it on the market, and again, when I signed it, all putting it in the range of $200,000 and up.
And the thing is here, she's not even had any visitors, anybody who's interested in the house in months. Initially, there were a few people in, and now people will not go near it, whether it's a two-family or a single-family. They just don't want to go near it. Whether it's a two-family or a single family, they just don't want to go near it.
Now you say that, but you know, that's, that's what's bothering me about this whole discussion. You're coming up with these phrases and these conclusions which are strictly conjecture. Now I had a house in Arundecote that I lived in for 28 years and when it came time to sell it, it was on the market for a full year with no offers. When I sold it, I sold it about a week after I got a, a new realtor. There's a suggestion in there somewhere.
The last use variance that I recall granting-
You, you mentioned that to my daughter too, which I think was inappropriate.
The only thing that I'm mentioning is that the fact that there has not been any interest in the house.
Well, my recollection of the last time we granted a use variance under similar circumstances, the property had been marketed and not sold for over two years. And that was the, uh, uh, property on Culver Road that's now a dentist office. It had been marketed and listed for over two years. The church that had built it and occupied it was unable to, uh, sell it. They had marketed it and had it for two years. There wasn't a single offer that we found to be sufficient. Five months, quite frankly, I don't find that to be compelling at this point.
One other point, on the, the $25,000 cost estimate, the one estimate that we have, and I mean, it says right on there, "Construction proposes this estimate around $25,000. This is only a budgeting number and not a firm number and may change once a drawing is submitted and final selections are made." So the $25,000 number, I mean, going to Mr. Thomas's point, you're saying 25,000 like it's something set in stone. You have one person saying it and they're saying it's just for budgeting purposes only. So there's nothing concrete that says 25,000 is the cheapest anyone can do it. Maybe you could find someone to do it for 10,000. I don't know.
No, look at the pictures of the interior of the house. Look at the maps that are included with your application. The contractor that gave me that application also said, "This is a double. I don't know why anyone would want to change it."
And I don't know if any of you have done any renovations recently, but ripping out a bathroom, converting the plumbing, changing the whole thing over to a single family with one set of utilities, um, it's not cheap, certainly not cheap.
Putting up walls to make buildings out of living rooms with a fireplace, a dining room, a sunroom. I mean, it doesn't make sense with the layout of the house.
It would really be doing great harm to the house to try to convert that into a single.
I would have sold this house if it were a double because those are the only people that were interested in it. It's been on, uh, the Knopf Nagel Channel multiple times. It's been advertised in the paper multiple times. People have called out as a blue and then not shown up when they find out it's not a legal double. The house is a double. It doesn't matter whether or not it was all family-related for the last 70 years. It's a double. And I can't sell it. And I could if it were a legal double. I would have sold it and I would be moved to a much smaller house, even if I wanted to be a landlord. I couldn't rent out the lower apartment because it's not a double.
Right.
Again, based on the financial information that we have here, I'm not, I, I, I just believe that the, the val- the, the value of re- return that you're looking to get is, is, uh, what's stopping you from selling the house or what's slowing things down. I'm not saying it's totally stopping.
So if we, so if we don't sell it in the next year, we'll be back in front of you again?
Well, but if you were to, I mean, in, in this market, in the real estate market, and I wish there were some realtors here that you could have brought, but in the real estate market around the town, what starts to sell is when the prices come down. And, and it, it, it was priced up there to begin with, uh, does that house, does the house sell at a lower price?
No one's offered me a lower price.
I know, but-
Cause it's marketed at a lower price.
Well, you're marketing it, people won't even look at it if they open the book up. It's, if, if they're in a budget of 180,000 or 189,000, if that's what their mortgage, what their budget is set for, realtor's not going to show them a 210,000 house. They're not going to do it. They're not even going to look at that house.
The deterrent is not the price. The deterrent is-
Well, we don't know that. We don't know-
Yes, I do.
That's, that's an opinion, but at this point, the, 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 well-
Well, what, if I understand you correctly, what you're, you're, you're indicating that if this was, if we granted the variance that allowed this to be sold as a double, you would be able to sell it for 211,000?
I don't know what we would be able to-
I, I don't know what somebody would offer.
Well, you're telling me that you, that you would, it's listed at 211, right? And you're telling me that you would have been able to sell it if it was a double. So somewhere, I'm going to assume, assuming-
That was months ago.
Assuming that the 211,000, right, would be an acceptable price for you and since you've listed it at that, that necessarily means it would be. At that rate, according to my rough calculations, your reason, your rate of return would be 2.87 a year over the 20 years that you've lived there. At the 198,000 that it's assessed for, it would be 2.38%. So the difference is less than, just less than half a percent. And I'm having a hard time understanding how that one translates into a reasonable rate of return and the other is unreasonable. I'm really having trouble.
Because we haven't even had a sniff or a whiff of an offer. Nothing.
After five months. I'm not surprised. It's not unusual. It doesn't mean we should grant a variance to facilitate a sale.
The deterrent again, sir, is not the price. The people who have seen the house, who have come to visit it, who have looked at it, have all been interested in it because it is a double. They have no interest in it when they look and they see that the legal use is a single. They just, they walk away. Uh, we would have loved to have had an offer for whatever, something, but we've received nothing.
Perhaps you need a different approach in marketing the property then. I'm not convinced you need a use variant.
I'm open to suggestions. I mean, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure what the, what the different approach is.
In, in a retail business, the question would be, would, do you think the house would sell if you had it on the market right now for 134,000? And how quick do you think it would sell for that? The way it is?
I, I don't know.
Probably sell quite quickly.
The problem again is-
It's just a matter of the dollars.
It's a double.
You might be sorry who moved in.
It's a double. Again, anybody who buys it is going to have-
My point is, is-
I'm sorry.
You know, at a price, it'll sell. And, and, and we, you gotta find the sweet spot of the price. And, and that's, that could be slowing things down based on what it is right now, the way it's laid out.
Has there been an offer that's been made that's contingent on obtaining a variance?
No.
Have it, okay.
There's no offers.
All right.
Not a one.
I think-
Not even a verbal.
I think what the board is saying is they don't feel that there's been evidence sufficient submitted to them to establish that even considering having it converted to a legal use, the cost, they haven't seen evidence that that price couldn't be had and still get a reasonable rate of return.
Would you let-
I think so.
Counsel, could I just ask for clarification? That is one of the four things we have to find. That is one of the required findings for us to grant this, is that we have to find that there is no reasonable retake of return.
And they have to feel that they have sufficient evidence to do that.
Would you consider, uh, an adjournment then and allow me-
Absolutely.
-to submit additional information on that particular point?
Absolutely.
And I, and I do not disagree, obviously, with that as a necessary element that needs to be found. But if you would consider an adjournment, uh, till next month, I will be happy to submit additional information.
We're very open to that. We need to have the information in front of us. As I recall, the last time the application was here, we ran into the same problem and requested the same information. So perhaps this time you'll be able to get it for us.
Okay, I was not part of the previous application.
I know you weren't. That's why I'm saying to you, this is the, this is the issue we had last time.
Okay.
And if you would address that, it would, could be very helpful.
More detail?
Also, I'd like to know, and I think the rest of the board would be interested in, you, you mentioned what a reasonable rate of return is for property in the Rochester area. I'd like to see some information on that that establishes what is reasonable, what is unreasonable, that kind of thing.
That's fair.
Okay.
I'd just kind of like to know what, my neighbor has a house, it's a similar size. It happens to be a single, but he has about twice as much land as I do. You know, I'd be interested in knowing what he paid for his and what he expects to sell his for someday when he moves.
Well, you can find that out at County Clerk's office online.
Are there other points or issues that I should be made aware of?
I think that's the big one.
Okay. And I'm, I'm happy to get you more information on that. Um, I will get you as much detail as I can and, um, I will have that submitted to you, you know, well before your next hearing.
All right. And we will see you in October with a number of chickens.
Can I ask a quick, what's the overall square footage of the home?
3,400 square feet. Each apartment is 1,700 square feet.
Thank you.
I just, there's one more point to that.
Sure.
It really hasn't been brought up yet and that is, if it was a, there's a difference between double and a two-family. I mean, it's, we're using that as the same thing here. It's always been owner occupied, except for those eight months. Owner occupied. Now, what I'm, uh, thinking here is if we just change this to a two-family situation, somebody buys it, rents it out to two separate families and then disappears or not, I mean, it's, who's going to keep the place up if there's two separate families living there? Not owner occupied.
Well, that's obviously-
Or don't we really care?
Obviously the owner of the property. I mean, as any landlord, um-
Now, if you just look next door to this house, you can see that the owner of the property is not doing a very good job of keeping up the place because it's falling apart. Now, he has, I don't know, a couple of different families living in it, they're renting from them and it's still falling apart. Looks terrible. And I'm afraid that the, there's going to be a substantial change in the neighborhood, the characteristics of the neighborhood. If we keep, keep getting into this rental situation, encouraging it by going two-family and, you know, maybe line our pockets a little bit better, but the heck with the neighborhood. You know, this is, this is what-
Well, the problem with that, sir, is not the problem with the zoning, it's the problem with the owner. And you could have an owner who takes care of his property, property impeccably, um, and it's a zone, you know, and it's owned as a two-family.
I just think the probability, when you have two separate families and the owner's not there, the probability of this degradation exists greater. So, anyway, that's a concern.
I hear your point.
And these apartments would not be cheap.
So, um, I, I do believe there are people in the audience who wish to speak. Uh, I don't know if you want to hear that tonight or you want to-
We'll give them the opportunity since they're here. We won't make them come back.
Okay, thank you, sir.
They're welcome to come back if they'd like.
So we will adjourn this till October and I will submit more information to you on that point on the reasonable rate of return.
Also, if you can leave the pictures so that we can look at them during the break?
Sure.
Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application, please come forward and give your name and address to the microphone?
I live at 137 Winter Set Drive in Rochester, New York. I would like to speak in favor of the application. I think we're going through the same brouhaha that we went through the last time. I think that Mr. Thomas, who recused himself the last time, should have done so tonight. Um, and did not, obviously. Um, I think that in terms of saying who is going to keep their property up or not keep their property up is kind of a moot point. We don't know who will keep up their property regardless of who buys a property, whether it's a single family, multifamily, double, et cetera. Nobody knows that. I do know that someday when you go to sell your house, you're going to want to get as much money as you can for it. And I'm wondering what the reasonable rate of return on that will be.
Ma'am, your comments should be addressed to the entire board, not simply to an individual on the board, okay?
I am addressing, okay? I am addressing somebody on the board who I do believe should have recused himself from the meeting tonight.
And you're the applicant's sister, correct?
Uh, yes, I am. And who, who's speaking? Because I can't tell.
I am, right here.
Oh, you are?
The leader of the brouhaha.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yeah. You.
Yes, me. All right? The same individual who asked for the same information when the application was here before that we're hopefully-
Right.
Going to receive.
And I would say that you got that information.
Well, ma'am, we didn't. Okay? So if you have anything else that you'd like to say in support of the application, you're free to do so. If your purpose in being at the podium is to criticize the board, you've had ample opportunity to do that and we've, that's enough of that. So if you'd like to address the application on the merits and why it would be beneficial for the neighborhood and why they've satisfied the requirements for a use variance, I will be glad to entertain that. Otherwise, you may have a seat.
Okay. The house, uh, that Mr. Thomas actually was referencing, that's directly to the left of my sister's house, which is also-
At the corner of Veronica and Portland.
Which was also a West family home. Now, that one was built in the 1800s as a single family home. At some point in time, it was converted into a two-family home.
Correct.
Has been recognized and rented out as a double-
Correct.
For a number of years. How did that occur? How, when was that variance granted? If it was ever granted or if it was just something that, uh, the zoning board never looked at because the zoning board wasn't looking into those things?
Do we know when that was granted by the town? Well, we'll have an answer for that.
And furthermore, as a matter of fact, I think it's, I would say that it's more than a two-family home because we're not exactly sure how the premises are being lived on, as I know that Mr. Thomas is aware of also.
Ma'am, do you have the address of that property?
I'm sure that-
1853.
1853.
And the owner, the owner of this property also has the interest of 1840. Here's the one for you. I'm looking at it now.
The house directly across the street from both my sister's house and Mr. Thomas's house, another, it's a Victorian home built in the 1800s, has been a double, a legal double now for years.
We have, I have an answer to the question that you posed, which I think will be of interest to everyone who's here. Uh, in a letter that was sent to the, in July of 1997, uh, it indicates that the, uh, town attorney in 1997 had researched the property and had found that it was a pre-existing, non-conforming, two-family use, which means that the town was able to establish that prior to the enactment of the, uh, zoning ordinance, the property was used as a two-family, uh, dwelling, which is not the case for the property that's before us now.
Um-
So there was no variance that was granted, there was no town approval that was granted. It was done before the town, in the interests of uni- uniform land use restrictions and the whole concept of zoning and land use came about, was done by the owner and the town then put in an ordinance that prevents, except under certain circumstances, that from happening in the future to protect the neighborhood.
Okay. So you're talking about the house that's at the corner?
Right.
All right. Which was owned by Maude West, well, it was the West family home. Maude West eventually inherited it and I believe it was either in the 1940s or 1960s or the, between the 50s and the 60s, I think that she converted it to a two-family home because she was no longer able to maintain it herself and had a nurse come in that was living, uh, in the either, I'm assuming probably upstairs apartment.
Actually, that would be contrary to what the town attorney found in 1997, but, you know.
Read the history in the town of Arundecote.
Well, I'm not going to debate the history of the property with you tonight. In 1997, the town attorney researched that property, found that it was a pre-existing, a pre-existing, non-conforming use.
That was in nineteen ninety-seven, my sister bought her house in nineteen ninety-four.
Ma'am.
Okay.
As I indicated to your sister's attorney, if they can establish that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, a variance is not required. They haven't been able to do that. The other property was able to do that. That makes it a different scenario.
Why is it that she was not able to do that? I'm just asking a question.
I don't know, ask her attorney, okay?
Okay.
Is there anything else that you want to say about this application in support of it as to why it should be granted under the standards? If not...
Okay, you obviously don't want me up here speaking or asking questions. I don't know why I'm not allowed to ask questions.
Ma'am, we've given you a wide latitude.
Okay, right.
All right, we went through this once before.
Yep.
And we're about at the end of it tonight. So am I, ma'am.
Okay.
There's one difference between you and me.
Yeah.
I'm managing the meeting, you're not.
Right.
All right.
And thank God I don't live in the town of Arondequite.
Well, there that's your feeling, and you're welcome to that. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
Pete Ruddy, Sixty Carlin Drive. Uh, I've got a couple of things, not to beat it to death here, but today at one o'clock, I checked the website, property's still listed at two nineteen-nine on the website. So, anybody that's looking for property is going to see that two nineteen-nine. The actual, uh, house was bought in nineteen ninety-four for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's per Monroe County. So, I don't know about anybody else, but if I can get a sixty-nine percent return on my investment over twenty years on real property here in Arondequite, I'm selling tomorrow. I also got a couple of different things that I'd like to speak on quickly. The house has been used as a two-family dwelling for the past seventy years. That's that's not true. In fact, the house has been occupied by the owner in one apartment, a relative in the other apartment. That's quite different than two separate families living, who are renters. Changing the zoning restrictions, allowing two separate families to occupy the house poses a very real threat to the character of the neighborhood. Most of the people, like myself, living in the neighborhood are opposed to rental property for the following reasons. Renters don't keep up the property, the owners keep up the property if they're living there. And as she said, that's true, you never know who you're going to get as a neighbor. But if the house is not, if the owner's not living there, the chance that the property's going to be upkept, I think we had one this morning, or tonight, about a six-foot fence. That's a property that's a rental that the owner isn't there. That's why we're here again, that's the second one tonight. The houses are very close, they share a driveway. Uh, if you've got two families living there, there could be two, three cars, they're going to be blocking driveways. Uh, I guess that's about it. I just don't think it's right for the neighborhood, and that a house on the corner is a rental property, and there's been problems. We've had, uh, police at our house the last few dimes, maybe twice in the last month, we've had to call nine-one-one for issues. So, and it's the rental property there, it's not the neighbor kids, it's rental property. So, that's all I got to say.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Does the applicant wish, oh, step right... Well, step right, all right, the next category is those who wish to speak but don't have a particular view one way or the other.
Well, I sort of do, but...
Okay.
I was here before, I live across the street, I'm the one that owns the Victorian home at eighteen eighty-six Portland Avenue, I've owned it since nineteen eighty-five, and Bruce Sunderville, yeah. And I know Russ personally, he's a neighbor across the street, one of the concerns that, you know, one of the issues, and I don't begrudge Gretchen from trying to get money for the property, is that if it's not owner occupied, two families, so to speak, like mine, I maintain it, I've done a lot of stuff to that house since I've owned it, that you get somebody that doesn't care, and then the property's not kept up like the one on the corner there that needs to be sited and taken care of. So, you know, it's unfortunate. She's in the situation where mine's a legal two-family, and hers isn't, but that's the way it's been, I don't know how you're going to change it without, you know, going through the process. But I have nothing against her, but I just, uh, you know, my issue would be that, you know, if it was rented to somebody that wasn't owner occupied, then you got somebody that's absentee landlord, and you got issues like the five houses up, Mr. Zagarowitz, I guess, name, and that's been, you know, taken care of slowly. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the application? Does the applicant wish to address any of the points that came up during the public
I think we've really probably addressed most of them anyway. Um, I did want to comment, though, on the parking. Uh, there's plenty of area for parking there, and I know there are adjacent cars in the um, or cars for the adjacent property that are parked there as well, there's plenty of parking, I don't see that as a problem. Um, again, I know the owner occupied, um, concept is the most, well, one of the most important things, because there's the fear that if it's not an owner occupied, you're going to have an absentee landlord, and the place is going to deteriorate. Uh, I understand that, uh, but again, that is conjecture too. Not every landlord is a bad landlord and doesn't take care of their property. So, uh, while I understand the concern, I don't think that should be an overriding factor in making a decision. Um, I will be back before you, though, in a month, and I will get information with regard to the reasonable rate of return, and, um, I'd be happy to have a discussion with your town attorney if there are any other issues that, uh, you feel should merit, uh, our addressing before the board.
That would be great, thank you. I will close that hearing, move on to the next matter.
Next item is a tabled item, case number ZB one four zero seven dash two. Upon the matter of request, Matt and Karen Robinson for area variances to install six-foot high front inside yard privacy fencing exceeding maximum allowable height, linear footage and type on premises eight six nine Lake Shore Boulevard, otherwise known as two five zero Rock Beach Road, in an R one residential district.
Good evening, everyone.
I need you to raise your right hand, Mr. Robinson, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have to have a motion to remove it from the table.
Oh, is there, I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're now off the table and on the podium.
On the podium. All right, well, uh, I believe at our last meeting, uh, the, uh, options were to go with either a four-foot fence or a six-foot fence. While we're disappointed with, uh, both options, uh, that were presented to us, uh, we have decided to, uh, go with the four-foot fence, uh, as far as, um, because we feel that, uh, neither of these options allow us to use our home and property in the way that we had envisioned, uh, we feel that the four-foot option, uh, is the best option, uh, at this time. We are consulting with the land surveyor and civil engineer to decide on our best options in this case, and I guess what I'm looking for from the board is, uh, an extension to complete the project based on the fact that we started this process back in April, and here we are, you know, September, and moving towards the months where, you know, construction of this project is going to take some time.
So, are you asking us to table it further?
Hmm, no, I guess, when this variance is, i- if this variance is approved, how long do we have to complete the project? That's that's what...
I believe a year.
One year.
One year, okay. Okay, all right, so the...
So, to to make sure we do it correctly, the offer of bringing out a four-foot fence from the corner of the house, out to, um, it's been so many different times here, out toward Lake Shore Boulevard, um, and I believe we were going to go out forty feet, right?
Yes.
And then go across, parallel with the sidewalk, or parallel with the, um, Lake Shore Boulevard, across sixty-eight feet to the corner of your neighbor's property.
Right, and can I, uh, stop you, when I, uh, submitted this proposal, I kind of goofed up the math, uh, that's why I switched from an accounting major. But, uh, the with the forty feet coming directly off of the house, that length of fence going from, uh, uh, that going goes along the length of Lake Shore is now fifty feet as opposed to sixty-eight feet.
Okay.
So...
The, uh... Okay.
And and I I did not...
So, you're gonna, you're gonna go out, um, parallel to the front corner of the building, right? It's gonna go out toward Lake Shore, forty feet?
Yes, forty feet.
Come across Lake Shore, fifty feet, and then come back to your other existing fence, which is, um...
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two feet back?
No, I was I was not under the impression that we were, I was under the impression that we were presented one option or the other, I didn't, I did not know that we could discuss other options, so...
Well, those were, those were the two best options that we talked about at that point, and, um, it was either that or going with the taller fence and bringing it back closer to the house.
Right.
But you want to utilize more of the yard.
Yes.
That sound okay?
It does, if, is it proper for me to ask a question about, okay, so, uh, is it possible, if we're going with a four-foot fence, to take that eighteen feet into consideration off of the corner heading out towards Rock Beach, which would be the original dimensions of the plan that was submitted on July, uh, seventh? And I have a copy of that.
So, you mean to go out the other eighteen feet?
So, yeah, so basically go back to the original dimensions that were submitted.
Right.
And I, and I see, and I see your point, I guess, you know, when my wife and I were discussing this, you know, we were under the impression that it was going to be one or the other. I didn't know that there was an opportunity, you know, just not having been through this experience, I wasn't sure if there was an opportunity to, if this was all open once again, or if we were just deciding on one option or the other.
Well, well, bring us up to date, you're saying that instead of going out forty feet from the house, you'd go out fifty-eight feet, right?
No, no, what I'm saying is, uh...
He wants to go forward of the house eighteen feet. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, so, out from the house eighteen feet, and then out towards Rock, uh, towards Lake Shore, still stick with the forty feet, instead of going out the initial forty-eight feet that I had originally proposed, and then that would then put that, instead of fifty, would put it back at sixty-eight feet, that goes along Lake Shore.
Again, I guess the only question would be how it's going to look, but...
Come out further towards Rock Beach, is that...
Yes, which, okay, okay.
Talking about going out...
Yeah, you have that picture.
This one.
Yes. Those those dimensions there, but, uh, instead of the six-foot fence, the four-foot fence.
This one, right?
Right, right. That would, that would, uh, that would maintain a fifteen-foot setback, and, uh, okay, that would, that would allow a fifteen foot foot setback, uh, and the the height would not be as high, so as to not make it seem such a, uh, large project.
So, if I understand you correctly, then what you're looking for primarily would be four feet to go out the eighteen feet towards Rock Beach?
Right.
Come up towards Lake Shore, go sixty-eight feet across and fifty-two back.
Right.
So, fallback position, desirable but not as desirable, come even with the house, go across fifty feet and back fifty-two.
Right.
And those are the two things that you'd like us to consider as opposed to six feet closer into the house.
Right.
Okay.
And just so I can understand.
Sure.
The eighteen out, forty up, sixty-eight across, fifty-two down.
Yep.
Comes up to a hundred seventy-eight feet, so you're asking, the code allows thirty-two feet.
Right.
You're asking for an additional one hundred forty-six feet.
Right, and and...
Originally, when you sent your application, you were asking for a hundred sixty feet, so you're actually asking today for eighteen more feet from what you originally asked us.
The initial proposal that we had submitted was actually a hundred and eighty-nine feet, because our initial, our initial proposal was eighteen feet out towards Rock Beach, forty-eight feet out towards Lake Shore, sixty-nine feet along Lake Shore, and sixty feet back. So, that would have been a hundred and eighty-nine feet that we had considered. Now, and 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 like I said, this, this is just something that I, you know, you know, I didn't know, we didn't know when we were, uh, discussing this, that it was open for discussion, we thought it was going to be one or the other, but since we are open, since it is kind of open for discussion, you know, I thought...
Well, it doesn't, I mean, you can ask for it, and we can discuss it.
Right.
Decide whether or not, uh, you know, or whether we we like the idea, or and or go back to the original offer.
Right.
Um, again, uh, that's something we can deliberate about.
It, am I wrong in in asking for that, or...
You're not wrong in asking whether or not we all decide...
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't overstepping any anything legally.
One thing I guarantee you, and that is if you don't ask for it, you won't get it.
Can I ask, what type of fence are you proposing, what material?
Uh, four-foot privacy, as opposed, as opposed to the six-foot privacy fence that we were initially, uh, asking for.
So, it's it's a solid set of fence?
It's, yes.
Which that in itself needs a variance also, right?
That was requested.
Right.
He asked for three variances, privacy as opposed to open.
Right.
The length and the height.
Which we had discussed that would be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and really, all of this is to maximize the, because of the unusual layout of that home, granted, we didn't, we did not build that home with that layout, that was, you know, that was not our choice, it was, that's just how the house was when we, when we bought the house. We just want to maximize the amount of property that we have in that one space that has the most open area of property on our, you know, on our land.
Now, have you guys looked into along Lake Shore planting pine trees?
Uh, we've, uh, discussed that option, that's one of the options we're we're considering.
Because, sorry to cut you off, but you also said earlier that you were talking to a land surveyor, isn't that something that's happening now?
We're in the process, we've, we've done some legal consultation, but, you know, we're not, you know, we're just exploring all options that are available to us.
So, do you know what your best option is yet? Or are you still trying to figure that out with people?
Well...
Because it doesn't make sense for us to make a decision if you don't know what your best option is. Just throwing it out there.
Well, if he, if we, for instance, if we approved the four-foot fence, uh, around, uh, the way we've got it, or the way we talked about it the other day, or last month, and then you wanted to put shrubs on the outside of that, uh, you could do that. Or if you didn't want to do a fence, and you decided, well, we are going to do shrubs, you could do that.
Right.
Um, or you could bring the fence in closer and put shrubs on the outside of it, you could do that.
Right.
Um, but, you know, as long as you're here, and we we agree on the layout, we might as well make the motion, and then if you decide to go with plantings, have at it.
Okay.
Uh, the only, and I, in in thinking about this for the last couple of months, driving around St. Paul Boulevard, driving around Portland Avenue, driving around everywhere, there's all kinds of great walls of shrubbery that look beautiful. Two of the ones that look the best that I see all the time is on Portland Avenue at the end of Carney Drive, both corner lots.
Right.
And have a beautiful wall of of some type of greenery, I don't know what the plan is.
Right.
They're ten-foot tall or better, and they're, and they're well-maintained, by the way. They look great, great privacy.
Mm-hmm.
That's an option for you, just, and again, there's all, all up and down St. Paul Boulevard, a lot of the front yards have got these big, beautiful plantings. Just an option.
Right, and and we we have explored that, uh, you know, the, the one thing that we've tried to take into consideration is the, how it's going to present, and what people will consider less of an eyesore, and we... And we've taken all of this into consideration. We've thought all of this through, we feel that we have worked extensively to try to accommodate uh your concerns here on the board and our neighbors' concerns. Uh you know, our neighbors have all spoken in in favor of this project and the only one complaint letter letter that spoke against this project was a gentleman that lives on the other side of Rock Beach that doesn't even come close to where our house is, so. That's just my opinion.
So if we were to make the motion and do the, you know, the four-foot fence, you're gonna be good with that, and then if you change your mind and put plantings, that's up to you and your wife.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
They probably stole it from somebody else anyway. Um I am Ron Lerner, resident of Aronikwet since nineteen forty-two and.
And your address, sir?
At Three Marks Hill Lane, one-four-six-one-seven. And I'm here to in support of Matt and Karen's project. In my view, it would actually be a great help because they have two little daughters and then they can have a a an above-ground pool inside the perimeter of that fence. They will have a good deal of privacy. There's there's far more traffic on Lake Shore than there once was, I've seen Aronikwet change over all those decades. The privacy fence uh would not be an eyesore because I've talked to Matt a couple of times that it could be done, say, in an earth tone stain or paint and with plantings in front of it, as well as maybe a deer-proof garden on the inside. And one could plant forsythias, viburnums, lilacs, daylilies, anything that the deer won't eat, if there's still anything left that they won't eat, they do have him in his neighborhood. I was talking to him one day and a deer strolled right through the yard in broad daylight. Uh because of the distance of the from the sidewalk to Lake Shore, the green space is much wider than in most residential side streets. Any concerns, like that snarky letter said about blocking the view for cross-traffic, is simply is simply ridiculous. Anybody who cannot negotiate that intersection there probably should hang up their keys. And if that intersection was as busy as that letter writer said, they'd have had a four-way signal there when my hair was still brown. I don't think the uh privacy fence is an eyesore at all and it can be made a great enhancement to that neighborhood done up with landscaping. I'm sure that Matt is quite willing and able and anxious to get the project going and do some landscaping on both sides of of the proposed fence. And because of the greater volume of traffic, sometimes you feel like you're in a goldfish bowl if you're in on a busy street and especially on a corner lot. The fence with some accompanying landscaping would not only enhance the neighborhood, it would be a sound barrier. You don't hear the dent of traffic when you've got something like that up there. Lots of possibilities, only limited to the imagination. I think this should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to come up and talk to us about this application? And we'll close the hearing and we will be in recess until nine-thirty. Did you want us to adjourn your case, did you make a decision? Okay. All right. That's at peace. That the veterinary place that you work? Lambrecht's is left. What's that? Oh, all right, then we'll move on. First application that we have with an applicant still present is for the property of twenty-nine twenty-four Culver Road. Uh this is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion uh with respect to this application?
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the application uh with some modification to it. As in discussion and the findings, that he actually would like a higher fence around the back part of the house, six-foot of the same type of fence that exists. However, bringing it to the front of the house to reduce that down to the four-foot level uh out to the sidewalk. Uh actually, he didn't wanna go all the way to the sidewalk, but almost. It was uh.
Whereabouts are you gonna reduce it down? Along the side of the house?
Yeah, it's at the front of the house to to reduce it down.
Four foot.
To the four-foot level.
So the motion then would be to grant the variance allowing for a six-foot uh fence of the type requested up to the uh southwest corner of the house and continuing out four feet to the three feet from the sidewalk.
Correct.
That would be the motion, okay. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, as far as the findings are concerned on this, I was thinking in terms of the fact that he has to deal with an unsightly condition because there's a rental property next door that is causing the problem. And he actually did indicate that it's not the current renters, but the prior renters that were mostly the issue. Nevertheless, he's trying to improve the situation as far as what his visibility is out of the house. He doesn't have to look at that. It's a fairly substantial request as far as bringing that fence up. However, because of the information in the pictures, I think it's justified. There would be no physical or environmental conditions affected with just a fence. And it's not really self-created because he didn't put that stuff there. He didn't create the unsightliness. He just wants relief from it.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. We are all present. Next application is 22 Rudman Road. Ms. Schmidt, have you decided whether or not you want us to table this to October? You do? All right, and I would make a motion to table this matter to October. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, who's a nay? One, two? Okay. So motion carries, five votes in favor, two opposed. No abstentions. We're all still present, and that'll be adjourned with the applicant's consent to the October meeting. Next item will be the application for 17 North Terrace. This is a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion that we grant the variance.
I'll second.
Is there a second? With respect to the findings, I would respectfully suggest that the application will not present a change to the character of the neighborhood in that there are other homes in the neighborhood that have front porches and that front porches generally are conducive to neighborhood characters as opposed to rear decks. The alternative that doesn't require a variance, he would be allowed to have a patio in the front surrounded by shrubbery that would be as tall as he could grow it. He's worked with, tried to work with the neighbor who had objections to his previous plan. He's taken out the tree that obstructed the view. As Mr. LaPerry's pointed out, the view really wasn't apparently as substantial as perhaps it had been thought to be. It is not a substantial request in terms of the variance that's requested. It will not have a negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions. It's only self-created to the extent that the house wasn't built with a porch and there are other porches in the neighborhood and he'd like to have a porch. There's also circumstances set forth in the application related to his health, which would make the existence of a porch with a roof over it a beneficial situation for the applicant. But the benefit to the applicant does not result in any negative impact to the neighborhood. I think I got that wrong.
You already got a second?
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to just say that the first time I turned this down and I have changed my mind, I do like porches. I know this was part of the conversation last time. I was very concerned the last time about the neighbor's view. But I did physically go out and stand looking out her window and I don't feel that the porch is going to obstruct a view. So I will be voting yea.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The... I'm getting myself confused. Next application will be pertaining to 869 Lake Shore Boulevard. This is a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion that we that we approve with a little change in the layout, a four-foot fence for the side yard. And I still believe that we should only go along the front corner, from the front corner of the house out. Let me get the map here. And I believe it'll still give them a large side yard. Front corner of the house, which would be the northwest corner of the house, four foot going out forty feet. Then going across, and he had originally written sixty-eight feet, but whatever the math is, I believe it's more like fifty to fifty-two feet across based on the way it looks. But if it is sixty feet, I would give it to him. As long as it's parallel with Lake Shore Boulevard, the same equal distance fence to the sidewalk, forty feet out from that corner of the house, across, parallel to the northeast corner of the yard and then come back, and again, it's approximately fifty-two feet back to the existing rear yard fence. A four-foot, again, privacy fence versus an open fence, but a privacy fence for the kids. I hope this gives them enough room to play and enjoy that side yard to their liking.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion?
We had talked about shrubberies and green things, plants. I mean, do we want to include that or not? I personally don't think we need to.
I would leave that solely up to them. I know in the past we've asked for greenery to hide fences. But I would leave that up to them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and we all continue to be present. Moving on to the applications that are... do not have applicants. The first is with respect to 999 East Ridge Road. This is also a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve these variances with regard to the setbacks and so forth proposed for all these several different businesses at the Depot Plaza. As he indicated, these are basically paper variances, but they do carry some weight as far as legal rights are concerned for each of the properties. Certainly doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. And there is not really an alternative to this because this is the way you do it. This is how you supply for the needs of those businesses. It's not a substantial request because each one of them is within reasonable amount. There'll be no physical or environmental conditions changed because of this. And if it's a self-created situation because they're trying to make it a good place.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I would just like to add, if I might, suggest an additional finding that we did find that there is no change to the character because there are reciprocal access parking agreements in existence. So if it ever comes to the...
I think it's, to my way of thinking, it's kind of like contour lines. They're there, but you don't pay any attention to them. And the only one who's going to pay attention to these lines is the banks. So I think it's a good deal for everyone.
Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure by my reading whether it would actually count as a type two action under seeker.
Okay, what would it be then?
Unlisted.
Unlisted.
The applicant did prepare a Part 1 EAF and we, on behalf of the town, prepared Parts 2 and 3 for your consideration tonight. The area variances are a type two action exempt from seeker when they refer to residential properties. I would certainly agree that there is no environmental impacts. I mean, that's what our findings are. I can go through anything you want me to, but we did prepare Parts 2 and 3 and we would recommend a negative declaration.
All right, then we'll back up and we'll do Part 2, the impact assessment. I would make a motion that we make the following findings. That the proposed action will not create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations. That it will not result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land. It will not impair the character or quality of the existing community. It will not have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area. It will not result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways. It will not cause an increase in the use of energy and it does not fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewal energy opportunities. It will not impact public-private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment facilities, utilities. It will not impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources. It will not result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna. It will not result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage. And it will not create a hazard to environmental resources or human health. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven in favor, no opposed, and nobody has left. All right, having established that the... whatever we just established by that motion, what did we just do? We approved all those findings. What does that mean? We did a negative declaration?
You're issuing a negative declaration.
Now we can go back to the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no abstentions, and no one has yet left.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
I did originally.
Mr. Rantini seconded the motion, Mr. Polino seconded the seeker action.
Got it, thank you.
You are welcome. I just have to take a minute to fill out all this extra things at the bottom of the seeker form. Okay, moving along to the next matter that's on our agenda that relates to 29 Madison Terrace. This is a type two action for seeker purposes, I believe. And does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variances requested. This is a matter where we previously approved a variance for a two-story home a year or so ago. And because the neighbors were unhappy with the two-story approach, they've now come back with a new single-family dwelling. I think they're to be congratulated here for listening to the neighbors.
I think you mean a single-story dwelling?
Single-story, I'm sorry. Single-story dwelling, thank you. And they should be congratulated for working with the neighbors. And they've tried to keep the character of the neighborhood in mind. And as I say, I just think we should approve the variance as requested.
I'll second. Any discussion? And also in those findings, you would incorporate the findings that were made in the variance that we granted on November 4th of 2013, am I correct?
That's correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board continues to all be present. I believe, oh, the application with respect to 1873 Portland Avenue, that was adjourned with the owner's consent. And I believe that now concludes all of the business before the board this evening, and we will be adjourned.